I'd like to call real me and the White S D seven oh one school board to order October second, excuse me, twenty twenty-three at three thirty P M. Daylight savings time, and I'd like to welcome everyone here. With that being said, we'll move item two to pledge allegiance. Please stand if you wish.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. With that, we'll move to item number three, a motion to approve the agenda.
Hold on.
Support.
Director Polter, support by Director Wardy. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. With that, we'll move to item four, a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Support.
Director McGlaughlin, support by Director Nibber. Any discussion?
We're gonna move that into consent agenda play or?
No, I, no, I thought the, the message I sent you, I thought you could have a chance to review it, and if no one opposed, I would try those items on October eighteenth. I don't believe we'll have many. There's not a lot of hires at this time, but give it a shot. If it doesn't work, and you want to change back, we can sure change it back.
So if we go to that new system, then number seven, all the personnel would be part of the consent?
Most of it, most of it. There could be some items then that don't go along.
That are separate?
Yeah.
For the sake of the audience and home viewers, we're talking about lawyers. We're trying to streamline the consent agenda. You can add more items underneath there, and if we do go on with that, you can, if somebody doesn't want more information on why it, one item or two, we can pull those off to the side and address those separately. So it's, it's just a matter of speeding up things for the board and the people, and the viewers or whatever. So that's an update there. We want another one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Excuse me. Thank you. With that, we'll move to item five. I'll turn that over. Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have Mr. Sikora that's here to talk a bullet, a spring trip to Hawaii for the choir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Superintendent. Normally, I approach you guys this year about a senior-only trip that we've done to New York the past few years, but the kids have been really persistent to try something bigger and more ambitious. So in the spring, in March, we talked about returning to Hawaii where we had been in two thousand thirteen, and Patty Studdard had been in two thousand seven. And they were really persistent with trying to push this trip. So I gave them a number of thirty students. We need thirty students, otherwise we're not going to make this trip happen. Because this will be a performing trip, where we'll sing at Pearl Harbor at the university and at another area high school as well. We didn't quite get to the thirty deposits over the summer, but when we came back at September eighteenth deadline, we got to thirty-six students, and you can see the list of students on the back sheet of your packet, as well as the chaperones who are interested in this trip pending your approval. We're shooting for a date that would be around Easter of March two thousand twenty-four, similar to the band trip timeframe. And we're, we'd probably miss three to four days of school depending on when we get those tickets bought for the airline. We're trying to be, find the most budget-friendly time to go without missing as much school as well. So we've been working on this for a little while with the parent board about coming up with dates and, and numbers of students and parents who are interested in going for this performance trip. We changed course a little bit because there's less seniors who have been going on the New York trip, so we thought we'd include juniors and seniors on this trip and then not have a trip next year. So it'd be their opportunity as juniors this year to go. In addition, Mr. Merfeld, I know is working on that Europe trip, which I was separate from a school activity, but that, that's also an option for kids further down the road. So I'm looking for your approval or your vote that we can pursue signing a contract. We have not signed any contract with any travel company. The travel company in there is Hawaii State Tours, which is a local group in Honolulu. We've used them before. The Grand Rapids Marching Band has used them three or four times. They're very authentic group. It's a, it's a father and his family who have the uncles cook for the kids on the beach, authentic food. So it's, it's not a commercialized trip at all. It's, it's a really authentic cultural trip. The luau is at his, his home, which he hosts luau for smaller gatherings and church groups and weddings as well. So that would be the company that we're looking to use. The cost is quite substantial for kids, especially on a shorter timeframe, and I wasn't expecting them to reach the thirty kid mark. So we're here now with thirty-six kids. Some of them who changed their mind from the spring, others who joined the class, and a foreign exchange student as well who's joined the group. There are a number of teachers on the chaperone list. We seem to have plenty of parents interested in this as well. But again, this would be different than New York in that we perform at Pearl Harbor for the memorial for the, the Beaufin is the sub there, and then the USS Missouri, some patriotic, patriotic numbers and sing some Hawaiian songs throughout the year too. So that's the plan. If we do not get board approval, we'll probably shift course and look for a New York approval. But there's seventy-eight kids in that choir, and thirty-six of them said that they would like to go to Hawaii, and there's twelve of them that are not eligible to go because they're tenth graders. So I thought it was more than half of them would like to go, and so I'm here asking your approval at the next meeting.
So you're gonna perform where? Pearl Harbor or?
Pearl Harbor, and then we'll be at the University of Hawaii.
Performing there.
Performing there, and that turns, actually, a lot of times into more of a workshop with the conductor that'll spend time with the kids, and then an area high school exchange where we would sing for them, and then they'd sing for us.
With another high school?
With another high school around the Honolulu area.
In Honolulu?
Right. So it's all based in Oahu. The hotel's been just two blocks from Waikiki Beach in the previous years.
Just quick question. The deposit requirement was three hundred dollars to sign up?
Right, initially.
Initially?
Because we wanted to make sure that these kids were serious and that they had talked to their parents that, yes, I'm, yes, I want to go. I know somebody had mentioned to Trina about a little more information here. We were waiting to see whether we had enough kids who were willing to go or wanted to go before we pursued more approval, because it wouldn't have been necessary for the board approval if we didn't, if I didn't think we met the threshold of kids who wanted to go.
I didn't read this yet, but what dates are we talking?
We're looking around Easter. It could either be piggyback before Easter, or it would shift towards after Easter. He, he seems to think, the travel agent, David, that it would be more economical to pick up leaving around Easter Saturday and then coming back later in that week, that we return after Easter break. But the dates are not finalized pending airline tickets and hotel costs. We're trying to be as economical as we can with this.
So do you think that it's realistic that the majority of these students who made their deposit will stick through to the end and raise the three thousand dollars?
I do, I do think, I, you know, I think we've had some kids already paid all off in one shot. We said other kids are gonna take advantage of the fundraising opportunities, the three that we have. In previous years, you know, some of the parents and I have come up with an understanding of, you know, maybe they didn't get it paid for by this time we left for the trip, but they got it paid off by the, before the end of the school year. So every family's different, and I know this is expensive, and so I was hesitant too. Initially, we didn't get that over the summer, but we came back in the fall and we got it and, and more. So I put the ball in the kids' court, and they seem to have followed through, and their parents have signed commitment levels that I'm hundred percent committed or know I want my money back for my refund. So we've had a lot of communication with the parents about how we're gonna pursue this.
Are they able to, do you think, raise a lot of the three thousand by the way?
I would say, I think for me, if they raised ten to fifteen percent of the money.
Oh, that's all you think they'll be able to?
I think, you know, I think the days of fundraising have, have slowed down quite a bit.
Do you think so?
For high school kids. I do. I think they're asked to pay for warm-ups for different sporting events, or they're, they're, like football, they're asked to pay for the, the cards right away and get all that. You know, I think people are fundraised out a little bit. So we offer it for the people who want to do it, but not a lot of the kids will take and, and just run with it.
Oh, they won't.
Most of them will rather get a job, or they rather.
And, and use that money for the trip.
Or they'll call grandpa or grandma, or, you know, some kids have the money too. It's, it's a, it's a big ask. I, I get that. And, but I, they came through with the number that I required and set, and when I updated on the board so they all could see the number every day, and it just kept getting higher and higher, and excitement builds. And is that the reason some of them are in choir? I don't think so. I think they're in there because they like to sing. And we've had a long tradition of trailing, whether it's with the band or the choir. And Matt, Mr. Berg and I have had talks about moving forward, that maybe the band and choir combine and start doing some trips that are together.
Oh.
Would be a different thought, is now that we're sharing some kids. So maybe.
Four are you?
Yes.
How many are you sure?
I think there's like four this year. Last year, we had a little bit more.
That are doing both?
That are doing both, and we've changed the system at the junior, or the Lincoln, where now kids can do band and choir. And now it's starting to filter up in seventh and eighth grade here, and we see it a little bit more when the set, uh, schedule's loosening up for eleventh and twelfth graders that'll join choir, or they'll do both, and, you know, let the music kids be real music kids.
And what age at the Lincoln can they join choir?
Fifth. Uh, she just started fifth grade choir this year. It's Lindsay Beer started it, and it's gonna be two days a week, opposite band, so they could do fifth grade band, and then they could do fifth grade choir. The goal is, like most schools, that music kids can be involved in music.
They can do both?
They can do everything. Right.
And that all starts in fifth?
Fifth grade, yeah.
Is there a deadline of when it has to be set in stone if a student isn't on the list now but wants to be added to be going?
My dead, my overall deadline for number of students would be at fifty-five travelers period, because now we're at one charter bus. If we go over that number, now we have to get a second bus wherever we go, and that's when the cost skyrockets for the kids. So if we approached that fifty-five number of total travelers, that would be a hard cutoff for me. And in reverse, if the airline tickets are being bought, that would be one chance for the kids to drop if they thought, you know what, I can't, I can't do this. Once we buy the airline tickets, we're, we're set in stone here. There's no going back.
Well, what I'm saying is if, you know, if I haven't paid three hundred dollars yet, and I'm not thinking today that I'm gonna be part of this, but, you know, something happens, I come up with money, my job, whatever, you know, Thanksgiving time, Christmas time comes, am I still able, is there a deadline of, you have to know and have that money to be part of this?
I, for me, I think when we, when we buy the bulk airline tickets, because if, we had this happen last year in New York, it's a chaperone added after the fact, so they didn't get the group discount on the airline price. So we had to go back and get that ticket, and it was two hundred dollars more than we had paid for the group. So I think airline ticket date is gonna be probably the final call unless someone drops out and someone else takes their spot, buys their spot back, and that, that happened in two thousand thirteen. We had a couple of kids unfortunately become ineligible at the last minute, and a couple of kids scooped in and paid that family for that trip so they could go, go on.
And we don't know what that date is right now, as of right now?
Once the board approves it, the travel company, Hawaii State Tours, will, will give us the airline price quote and the payment information. We'll sign the contract, and we'll buy those tickets. So I do not know. I'm hoping it's gonna be as soon as eighteenth after it's possibly approved.
Eighteenth of?
October, when you guys meet next to vote on it.
Oh, so really, kids, if they want to go, they better.
They've been putting money in the bank already.
I'm just saying, if other kids, like she's saying, want to go, it's pretty soon.
Yeah.
If you're getting the tickets in October.
Right.
Then the kids have to kind of know.
You know, September eighteenth was the original deadline.
Yeah.
And that's, we had a couple float in a couple days after that, that we said yes, and then I told the students that, all right, once we approach fifty-five travelers, we're, we're done, because that second bus is just too expensive to divide the cost.
Oh, fifty-five travelers, so even the chaperones?
Right.
You include in that number?
Right. Look, thirty-six students. I think there's fifteen, is it fifteen adults on the list? So fourteen adult chaperones, and then myself.
So fifteen adults.
Fifteen adults, thirty-six kids, so we're at fifty-one.
Oh.
Total.
So you can't take any?
Just a few more.
Fifty-five is a full bus.
Fifty-five, and that's even shoe bat down to the cities, to the airport. You know, everything's divided by a number of travelers, and we don't want to get over two buses.
Oh, no.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Awesome.
Great, thank you, appreciate it.
Sounds great.
We, we will add that to the board's approval at the next meeting then.
Great.
Thank you. Thanks again. With that, we'll move to item six, public comment. Let me see then, Mr. Chair. With that, we'll move to item seven, personnel. Thank you. You're welcome. Item A is a motion to accept the resignation of Emily Zeig as a winter cheerleading advisor effective September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three.
So moved.
Director McGlaughlin, support by Director Wardy. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Item B is a motion to approve the hiring of Linda Larson as a co-student council advisor effective September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. Hold on.
I'll support.
Director Polter, support by Director Nibber. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Item C is a motion to accept the resignation of Sarah Paulo, people's support assistant, Washington, effective January fifth, twenty twenty-four.
Support.
Director Polter, support by Director McGlaughlin. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Item D is a motion to approve the request for leave of absence by Robert Farnsworth pursuant to Minnesota statute three point zero eight eight eight. This is effective February ninth, twenty twenty-four, through the last day of the twenty-four legislative session.
So moved.
Support.
Director Polter, support by Director McGlaughlin. Any discussion?
Yeah, was he on a leave not that long ago and then came back early, and this is now just going back to that same leave, just a different time? Or how does this work when you're, you go, you come back, and now you're going again?
Yeah, so he, his, his leave is different than all of the other leaves that we approved for teaching staff. Teaching staff, it's one twenty-two, eight sixty, I think, is the statute that, that governs their leave. But this is just particular to teachers that work in the legislature. So he's got some different criteria.
Okay.
But we've met, and we've worked through all those, those hiccups and concerns that he has, and I, this should satisfy what he, what he needs, because the other thing that we're concerned about is if they have a special session, and he goes later, he, he could potentially go past the end of our school year, which is a good situation for us, because he's, even though he is working with children, the classroom isn't, isn't tied to Mr. Farnsworth, where he's in front of kids every day and refining subs. So it's really kind of a nice fit for us and for him, so.
Okay.
So is, in answer to your question, has he come and gone, I mean, he's been on leave and then come back?
Yes. I'm sorry, I'm sorry if I didn't, if I missed that answer, but yes, he has been on a leave prior to this last year, and then, yes.
And then if he continues on the legislature, this will continue?
Yes. We, we have to do this.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. With that, we'll move to item B. Administrative reports. Anything from the directors?
Yeah, and you know what? Somebody, I bet you Mrs. Sikora may talk about it, but I just want to commend everybody for homecoming week. I've heard so many positive things out of the community, all the fun things, and so to everybody that made that happen, it was good. It was awesome. Thank you.
And again, I know you'll probably speak to this, but I tried to attend as many things as I could, and just the participation alone of not just the high school kids, but even the younger kids. I know at some of the sporting events, the high school teams were, you know, helping those younger kids in their events, and it's always nice when you can have those older kids, you know, those younger kids really look up to them whether they know it or not. And the band at these places, it's always nice to have the band, and I know at the volleyball game, there was teacher appreciation, and it just goes to show that teachers really do have a long-lasting effect, because I did see some elementary retired teachers there, and they still come back for that event, and it's always, it's nice. So, yes, thank you to everybody.
And you know what? I think it was nice that the, that the Queen of King Court went through the non-public schools. At least one of them is on, on Facebook, and I think that was really greatly appreciated too. I don't know if they did both of the schools, but hopefully those are gonna be our students one day too. So just like Sarah said, I think those little kids look up to the older kids, and I think that goes a long way in goodwill. And the other thing is, they seem to have a lot of little kids performing at halftime and at breaks and sporting events lately. And to me, that's awesome, because that brings in all their parents to be members of the audience, you know, cheering on whatever sport it happens to be, and it just is a great thing to have these little kids part of it and performing these little junior jackets, you know? And the other thing is, it seems like more teams are going, you know, like to cheer for other teams. One sport is cheering for the other. So I don't know if you've sent that message out, or if Mr. Turner has, or coaches are doing that more, but I really like that. I like the idea of one sport supporting another sport, and boys supporting girls, and girls supporting boys, and, well, girls have always supported boys. I like to see boys supporting the girls, you know? But, you know, I, I just think it's great. It's all school spirit, and that seems to be going very well right now. And the other thing is, for our community and the investment in cheaper field home stadium, just the soccer games, like I understand on Saturday, and just having it there where there's bleachers, and I feel like it's maybe easier, the accessibility is a little bit easier than going out to the power. It's just really nice for people to get out there, for grandparents, for older people, for everybody. It seems like the stands are pretty filled for soccer. Yeah, I think I heard that soccer's getting more audience now, which seems a little fickle, you know? Why won't people go out to the park? But, you know, that's just the nature of humans, you know? They want to go to the new fancy field, and, you know, that's how it is, I guess.
Very good. Anything else? Hearing none, we'll go to I M B administrators and set. All right.
Well, thank you. I'll, I can piggyback off the homecoming stuff. I'll start with that. At the Lincoln, it was great. We were able to participate, do a bunch of stuff too. We follow along with the high schools doing here. As a parent, it was amazing week. I commend Renee and everyone at the high school, Dana Lindstrom. I mean, does she sleep during the week? I don't know. She's everywhere, take care of everything, her and the rest of her crew and staff. Outstanding job. It was a lot of fun to participate, see all that stuff last week, as you guys were just saying. Just wanted to say that as well. As for things in my world, lots of little things, because we've had a pretty relatively normal, run-of-the-mill start to the school year, so it's been a great, great start. I mean, things have been running pretty smooth. We just finished up our fast bridge testing, which kind of gives a snapshot or baseline for the kids academically to start the year. So we just finished that up the last few weeks of September. We'll do that again mid-winter. We'll do that again in the spring. Shows our growth and where the kids are at, so this kind of gets us started for the school year, where everyone's at. So that's just wrapping up, so teachers will start digging into that data. We're spending some time on our next P L C going over that data. So, and our teachers, this is something new to them. We had STAR in the past, and fast bridge was a bit there in our mention list. Now we went to full fast bridge for everybody, so we've had some trainings, and we're gonna continue to support staff, get them up to speed. It's relatively close to the same as what they've been doing in the past, but it's got a little more of a curriculum aspect to it, where the kids will get some resources that they can do in areas that they might be lacking. So it's just a little, little learning curve right now, but we're working on that. Our fifth and sixth graders started swimming this week. Mr. Venziano got, the pool was up and running to start the year. It usually takes the first week of September, getting the kids acclimated, going over all that groundwork and safety and stuff for swimming, but that started officially today, so our fifth and sixth graders will now, for the rest of the school year, be getting swimming every, every, at least once a week. We have that four-day rotation, so they, sometimes they might catch it twice a week, but they're getting it once a week. So that's always great. A lot of kids are excited for that, so I'm getting anxious. We worked through all that too with parents and kids.
Mr. Gaberty, can I ask, have you had, you know, many positive comments about swimming that we added it back?
Yeah, we've had quite a few, quite a bit. I mean, people really are, because I think there was a much of, there was a high need for swimming lessons in swimming, which we've done a lot as a district ourselves, or on top of what we're doing at the Lincoln, because we've got our aquatics instructors and lessons that we're putting on. But we've had a lot of positive comments. There are a few of those anxious kids. We worked through, we worked with the families and do what we gotta do to make it all work for all of them. But it's nice to have the swimming pool up and running for those kids, and then to have that resource in the pool in the district for all these other classes and stuff that we have, the community and stuff. So, yeah, lots of positive talk with that, so. Uh, we started targeted services today. That's our after-school. Two days a week are reading, two days a week are math. We have about roughly forty kids signed up right away to start. That'll grow as we go through it. But she wants to get through parent-teacher conferences, and teachers may recommend. It's just kind of a support system for those kids that might need a little extra help, support for school. Like I said, we do two days a week with math and two days a week with reading, and that's third, fourth, fifth, and sixth at our building. So that got started today. Uh, to start the school year, we saw a nice influx of new kids at the Lincoln. We had fifty-three, as of today, there's fifty-three new kids walk through our door, which was pretty cool. It was quite a few new kids. We had, we've had about twenty-eight kids leave at our building this year, so we did grow at, from last year to this year with the kids coming in, which is great. A lot of that, from what we've talked to people, people coming in, tours we gave, people we talked to, a lot of the reasons they gave us for, you know, we have fantastic P T O lately that's been really putting forth a lot of effort. We've got these monthly parties and after-school activities and family fun nights and Gaga pits that they built. We had, um, they had the ninja core. I mean, just those things that we have, these extra things that the community gets to see. Uh, fifth, sixth grade swimming was one that came up with people. We offering math masters now to kids to do. We have Lego robotics that's getting offered. We've had knowledgeable for these kids. So we got all these different activities, and it's, you know, and we're in a business. I mean, we gotta promote ourselves, and people are seeing this, and we're starting to see some influx of families and kids, and we ask them these type of things and talk about things. These are the reasons they're giving us. So kudos to our staff and people that are putting all this stuff on. Our P T O has been doing a great job with all these different things, so.
And interrupt, Derek.
Yep.
Where are these fifty-three kids from? Like other surrounding towns or hipping?
Some from in town, some from surrounding communities.
Where had they been?
Other schools in town, the other private schools.
Private schools, okay. So they came from there, maybe?
Yep, some were home-based, homeschool, and coming back now after the pandemic. Some from, we had some from Tennessee, from Florida. We've had some kids coming in from different states.
That were moving here for the parents' work or whatever?
So we've got a little influx of, a little of everything, really, and then some of the kids that have left us, in general, this happens every year, they've gone to the surrounding schools, Nashua, Cherry, Chisholm. We get a little of that movement every single year. We get kids that come and go, so. And we picked up some kids from around those surrounding schools too, and that usually is almost a wash every single school year.
Yeah.
You get some kids going over to schools, we get some of those kids moving back.
But this year, we're at the Plubs.
Yes, yeah. We definitely saw a rise this year.
Yeah. So the kids that come, they're, that leave hipping to go to like Nashua or Chisholm or wherever they go, Cherry, is that because of location, or do they, is there other reasons?
Some is location. We do have, you know, occasional sports. We do.
Well, I know sports, yeah.
Yep, we do. Uh, some kids just want that smaller setting, you know? I mean, when I was over in Nashua, we'd get some kids over there, and they succeeded with that smaller group of kids. Some kids succeed better over here at the larger.
Smaller classes, smaller group.
Yeah, because it's just, you got, you know, a two-section school versus a six-section school, so you have a little.
Yeah.
So it's, it's all sorts of different things back and forth, you know? Last thing, like I did mention there, is we did get another Gaga pit built in our, on our playground, so we have two of them. I wanted to give some kudos again to P T O for that. Tate Merton and Jack Jones built it, I believe, just over the weekend. Yeah, really cool. And this one, this one's an inclusive design. Inclusive design, it's got a door, so the handicap kids can get into it. So this one's pretty cool. So now we have two of them out there, and they're pretty popular. I know the P T O's looking at, maybe trying to figure out something to put inside of them, because when we had eight inches of rain, it turns into like a big mud pit, and we had to shut it down for a while, but really neat for the kids. They really enjoy that thing, so. Now we have two of them, yeah.
Did the two boys that put it together, did they get credit like for a class?
I think it's, don't quote me on this one, because I did kind of confirm. I know the first one was built for, with Boy Scouts.
Oh, okay.
So I'm thinking that this one was too. I could find out for sure, but usually it's their community project they have to do.
Uh, in our high school?
High school.
I think it was the senior. I don't know about the other one.
The building?
Yeah. Like the previous one was built with their community project for the Boy Scouts, so.
Nice.
That's about all I got.
Can I, may I ask a question, Derek?
Sure.
That targeted services that started today, it's after school. Okay, so if a child is, you know, they need math, so they come two days after school, who's teaching them?
We have teachers in our building that we've operated to, that take it, and it's through the Northland Learning Center. There's a funding source for all sorts of stuff. Mr. McGlaughlin will be able to add more to it than I can, but we do have our teachers involved with it. And letters go home. They have a form filled out by parents. Parents know they have to pick up the kids in, because we don't have the transportation afterwards, so that's all done, and Mr. Bethel takes care.
But it's our own teachers, okay.
Yep, it's our own teachers.
So and that doesn't cost us?
It actually, it actually generates some revenue.
Oh.
So it's, it's an A, there's an A D M that's tied to it, just like there is for
A D M?
The average daily membership, the days that we count for student attendance.
Oh, okay, yeah.
After-school programs targeted, or they generate revenue based on that attendance.
That work, because we're offering them?
Correct. And we're buying that, the ability to do that, through the Northland Learning Center. We approve that agreement.
We approve that agreement targets. We normally approve it, I think every two years or every year. And we pay a little bit for them to manage the program because we, we can't do it ourselves. You have to have an ALC to qualify for this. And we have an ALP. Ours is a little bit different designation in the state. So we use their ALC designation. We pay a small service fee to utilize the program and then we generate revenue. All we're trying to do is just break even. We're just trying, so, so the formula is that Derek and Bob and Renee and the other principals, they know what the teachers are getting paid. They know how many days a week. They do a budget and then we just try to generate a rev-
That's really interesting.
Break even. Yeah.
That's very interesting. I mean, you would think off the top of my head, I would think we're paying, we're just paying our own teachers a little extra to teach extra after school.
No, it's, it's state funding that comes that we generate that, again, we just, we just try to make enough money to and we were even, you know, during COVID, we were offering some transportation, I think, to, in the summers we have, we can offer it in the summer. We have some transportation in the summer.
So how do we identify what students participate or?
We send a message, an email to all the teachers and say, recommend any of the students you want. And then Mr. Vestal sent that out. Be a parent square to the family saying, you know, they've been recommended for this. Are you interested? Parents could say no, it's just not for school thing. And now that's why I say, well, it'll start to grow. Those parent teacher conferences come in and the teachers meet with parents and say, you know, this might be a good thing to help catch them up. And we start creeping in more and more. And once parents or kids see that other kids are doing it, it kind of just snowballs a little bit and we start gaining a few more kids. So
That's really great.
Yeah.
I wonder, and maybe you wouldn't know, I know it's just starting today, but do you think that this will directly have an attendance change for the boys and girls club?
I don't, I don't think so, but I don't know.
I mean, not that matters, but I mean, you know, because they're going to go into this, rather than going to there to get help with their
Yeah. I don't know. I honestly haven't heard that it would. And I think we have some, a lot of younger kids too. Maybe it would, it would be some older friends that would bust over and go.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Homecoming was such a blast. And I, I just want to reiterate too that Dana Lindstrom, Linda Larson and Stephanie Wesley have really done an amazing job. I mean, every year, but this year was really phenomenal. And starting with the kickoff football game on Friday before, I think it just really amped everyone up and then they got the win. And then we just could slide into the homecoming week then with all these festivities and and it was fun to see the little, the little blue jackets out on the field for football and soccer and the cheerleaders during the volleyball game. Yeah, it was, it was a really fun week. And then we had the dance on, on Friday night, which was fun too. So thank you to all those people. And today is custodial appreciation day. So I want to give a shout out to our custodians. They're doing an amazing job too. We, Mr. Snyder and I supervise lunch every day and one of the custodians actually just goes around, he chats with the kids and they don't litter as much because he's right there. You know, they're not going to throw something on the ground when, when he's right there. So it's, that part's been really great too. So I, I brought a lot of stuff today because, you know, this, the year is rolling and a lot of, a lot of stuff is coming at us besides all the fun things, but the fun things I think are what keeps kids here in school. So for example, Jostens came today. They met with all the seniors and they're talking about caps and gowns and how to order and, and, you know, make the year the best year that it can be. And then, and then they talked to our sophomores and it's not only the ring sales, but they're talking about their commitment to graduate and they signed a banner that we hang out in the main entrance. So they signed that today. But he does a really nice job of telling the kids, you have to make these the four, you know, greatest years that you can. Join the activities and do things with your friends because these are going to be your core memories. And he starts out with a video of his own children riding a bike for the first time. And he said, these are, these are the memories that you probably remember when you were, when you rode your bike for the first time or when you lost your first tooth. And high school is the same way. So it was, it was a really good speech. And that's what we're trying to tell all of our kids and that's the message. Go support other people's sports, you know, it's support the band, support the choir, support, support your friends in whatever they do. Come to watch Beauty and the Beast. You know, all the, all the things that we have up to offer. So yes, that's a message we want, do want to send. We have a lot of legislative updates and this was, I'm sure you saw this as a, maybe as a board probably. And Mr. Aldrich brought it to us during the summer for the whole admin group. And then this is broken down into a timeline of all the things that we have to do by date and everything in red. We had to get done before school started. So what I'm trying to say is we have a lot of work to do and our department chair has already met once this year. We meet again tomorrow. And these are some of the things we need to decide. So for example, civics, which we offer right now to every single ninth grade. It's a required course. That has to move for ninth graders beginning next year to eleventh or twelfth grade for credit. So we have to somehow figure that out with our social studies department, how that's going to move and what that's going to look like. Tenth, eleventh and twelfth grade students, starting as ninth graders next year, must take a course for credit in personal finance. So right now we have personal finance as an elective, but the state is saying it's required. So we have to figure out if that can be taught by a business teacher, a social studies teacher, a fax teacher or a math teacher. So we're going to have to figure that out as well.
And what grade will that be?
It has to be tenth, eleventh or twelfth. And then eventually they don't have a timeline for this, but we'll have to offer computer science taught by a math or a business teacher. So it's a lot of like, the direction is maybe hiring a business teacher. So we're, the departments will be talking as department chair, how we're going to go forward with this. And then as a board, you'll probably have to decide who to hire, but the legislation is saying we need to do that. So there's some, that's, I think it's good things that we have to do and it's, but it's, it's going to be a lot of work and hiring, yes.
I don't mean to put you on the spot, but somebody on the street approached me and asked me this question. Iron Range history, you know, iron mining, iron range. So much of this country got its foundation by the work we do on the iron range. And, you know, do we offer an elective class? Do we do anything, you know, with through our career academies and the mine view? And I said, you know, I don't believe we offer an elective class. But I don't know, is iron range history, how is it built into our curriculum? And is that something we should really be?
Like maybe part of American history or something?
I think in, in many ways it's embedded, you know, because we live here and it's embedded. And I know Ms. Lynn Genke is here today and she teaches a Minnesota geology class. And a lot of the things I think fit nicely right with her class and that's an elective. And then there are Minnesota history standards that are built in that, that we have to teach. And then part of that would be from this area. But I don't have a specific, I can't say yes or no, you know, how that's, how that's done.
But as long as our iron range history is embedded in other courses, I mean, that's wonderful. That's good to hear.
It is because of war stuff that went on. We're all, iron ore came from World War I and II. It's ancient somewhere.
As soon as they go to the discovery center and that's, you know, so much of the discovery center is about our history, especially in this area.
But what histories do we offer? American and what else besides that?
Well, there's, I should pull up the whole schedule, but we have, it, we have civil war, World War II. The kids have to take American history, world history, geography, economics, civics and career in college.
Okay. So they have to take American history and what was the other, world history?
World history.
Okay. It would be nice to have a Minnesota history class, okay? Elective.
I was going to say, our, our sixth graders, that's their curriculum is Minnesota history, but it's, they're younger, you know.
Well, sixth graders take Minnesota history?
Minnesota history, yeah.
Oh, that's good. Well, that's great. And do they do the iron range stuff as part of that?
Yeah, I believe it's, it's part of that.
Okay.
And then of course we've, we've had the Native American history. That's another thing too in, because we have an Indian Ed program, we have to offer a language class for Ojibwe or Dakota language. And Ojibwe makes sense here because that's the, the culture and the language spoken. So this year in the spring, we will have Ojibwe language too. So we're a little bit ahead of the game on some of these things. I just read one page to you, but this is, this is a lot. But I'll pass it around because you can, it's really interesting, all the things that they were doing.
Can you email that to us, that legislative requirements?
Yes. It was something that came out last week in May. I can send this whole board.
Yeah, I'd like to see the requirements.
It's overwhelming.
Yeah, but like the personal finance, I didn't know that was going to be required. And people have been talking about that forever.
Yes. And I'm happy we have it. Like, so we have it as an elective. And they have to take part of personal finance when they take econ, which is a required class. And they have to take, I think when they're in seventh or eighth grade fax, they do a little bit of the personal finance in there too. So they get a taste of it as junior high and then when they're seniors, but and then if they take Jamie Trendberg's independent living, they get it as well.
Oh, yeah. Because I've
Murray Keyes Paulson has a thing in the paper every week, iron range history.
Yeah, oh, I don't, I read that. But I, I have, several people have stopped me and said, why don't we teach kids how to take out a loan? You know, how do you go about buying a house? How do you go about renting an apartment? How do you go about all these life things? And I mean, I would like to ensure that we're teaching that. So
And we do.
Okay, good.
We do, but it's, all of that is an elective. And so now the state's saying, now we will have to have the kids go through it.
And every kid now will have to hear about that.
They'll have to, yes.
To me, that's fantastic.
As an elective, on average, how many students have signed up for it?
About, we have thirty to sixty kids go through every year, those classes.
That's not a lot.
That's not a lot.
And everybody, like you said, needs to know how to balance a budget and just everyday things.
Right. But I should say, every single ninth grader has a, a whole unit on personal finance when they go through the career in college class that Ryan Olson teaches. And so they, they at least get something. But yes, what you're, it's, it's best to have another personal finance class when you're older because ninth graders aren't thinking about
No, taking a loan. Or buy a, right.
Even buying a car.
I would think a senior should be the one listening to how to take out a loan and all that, or buy a car.
So we'll have to, all of those things have to be decided and, and put in. I just wanted to piggyback off of what Derek said too. FastBridge has replaced STAR with the, the READ Act that was, that's also in here. And I'm very proud of our English department and K-12 actually. Carrie McDonald led the charge in that with the literacy teams. And they met last year. They piloted FastBridge and then the state came out and said, we only have two approved testing programs and one is FastBridge. And that's what we're using. So we've tested every student at the high school and we had all that, all those results for the first PLC day so that every teacher could go through what the results were so we can make goals and have those kids meet the goals for reading and math. And we had, it was, it was kind of fun that there are highlights of like the, the basic foundational multiplication, division, subtraction, addition. Our kids are really good at that. Like eighty to ninety percent already were proficient. So that's the good news.
What's the bad news?
Well, the whole state was kind of low in the MCAs. So, I mean, we, we are hanging with them as a school, you know, for example, here's the seventh grade math MCA. Our school is forty percent proficient, the district forty percent proficient and the state was forty percent. So they're all, like every single one is, is pretty close, but as a whole, the whole state is low. But every time they redo the test, they make them more difficult. So, I mean, I used to teach kindergarten when I started, they had to learn to write their name and tie their shoe by the end of the year. And now, or when I ended teaching kindergarten sixteen years ago, they had to be able to read one hundred sight words, be able to do addition, subtraction, count past one hundred. And so, and if that's just kindergarten, third grade was doing like algebra compared to, you know. So it just gets harder and the, our kids are smarter, I think. So those were my main things. Oh, and ACT, we've been tracking that. Going back to 2017, we're, we're right in there. It was 2017, our, our average was twenty-one point eight, then it was twenty-two point two. Then we missed a year from COVID. Then it went down to nineteen point six. It was up again to twenty-one point seven last year. And then this current year, twenty-one point six. So we're, that's a pretty good ACT score.
ACT. And we're at twenty-one.
Twenty-one point six. Yep.
Do you, Mr. Sirkor, how many kids took the ACT? Do you know?
Forty-two.
Forty-two. Because it's, it wasn't a requirement.
Right.
Again, I know my son, to the main you, didn't, didn't have to take the ACT this time. So so is it, are they bringing the requirement back? Or is it just still not a?
Depends on, on various schools. Like before, during COVID, they kind of dropped the Accuplacer and all that to go to PSEO or, or SITS classes. And now we have to take them again. So Ross Harvey took the Accuplacer with his SITS Calc kids last week because they need to take it again now to get that.
Renee, and what some schools are doing is you could take the ACT in lieu of like your GPA. So maybe, so they'll look at different factors. So before it used to be, you have to have this and this. But they're saying, well, maybe if your grades were a little bit lower, but your ACT was, was higher, then they would overlook the fact that you maybe slipped in a couple of classes. So each, yeah, each university is different and we tell the kids to really research the ones that they want to go to to see what that specific one wants.
Sure.
Yeah, I know, I have a senior, the college visits or information that we've gotten is you have a choice to submit that if you would like, but whether you do or don't submit, those test scores should not play a factor in you being accepted. But they have put in that that may change the following year.
Sure. Now, can you answer?
We're going to put on a veterans program in November. So our SITS, Mr. Christie's SITS class for social studies is going to work on putting some questions in together, together for a panel that's coming in. And we also have to dedicate a program to, or some kind of program to Indigenous Peoples' Day on October ninth. That's coming up on Monday and the social studies department is going to lead that. So every social studies class will have some kind of Indigenous Peoples' Day talks embedded in their classes. So any questions for me?
I've got a quick one. And maybe it's Mr. Snyder that would need to speak, but can you update the board on the legislative group that's coming here on October twenty-third? Is it twenty-third?
I think it's the twenty-fifth, isn't it?
Okay.
Maybe I'm wrong. Or maybe it's the twenty-third, twenty-fifth.
You still have to add it to it.
Yeah, the educational policy and finance committee, I think, reached out.
Twenty-fifth at noon.
Twenty-fifth at noon. They'll be in the auditorium. We're going to have members from student council, a few teachers, paras, kind of a cross section of, we need some school board members, I believe too. And they want to talk about the impact of the new policy, all of these, like how that is affecting us and the increase in, in educational funding. So that'll be a nice civics event too for the, for the kids.
So what I understood is it's the, it's the chairs of all the major legislative committees, correct, that, that are coming on this tour and we're one stop and they're getting some other stops. Okay. So that, I'll, I'll send you the invite. I'll send the board that invite and it's you're more than welcome to attend. I was hoping we'd get, we'd have a larger student body and
I know, but they want to keep it. They don't want to have a whole, a whole bunch of people. We do. I would love to, you know, what a great opportunity to have our students fill the auditorium and see, you know, the work of legislation in action.
But is it just our school district that's invited to the event on the twenty-fifth?
Yes.
Yes.
Change the subject a little. What's the status on, I saw there were talks across the state about police officers and they settled with whoever is saying that they wouldn't now come back to school districts because this law, whatever. They talked about it and they got it all settled. Oh, yeah.
Is, are we done with Mrs. Secora? If I let her sit?
Although I was going to ask her, we had, we have a police officer, right?
We have presence. So they, Officer Casey was here this morning, for example.
Yeah.
And, and we, they try and have someone on campus or driving around every morning, around lunchtime and then again at the end of the day.
But that's, we had more last year. They were here all the time.
Yes, because we had an SRO who was right next to Mr. Snyder's office.
And then they pulled it because of this discrepancy with this law, right?
Not really. So the, I mean, we, last year we had two SROs. This year we have one.
And did they pull it because of that law?
No, it was, they, they pulled it because of coverage that they need on the street. They don't have enough applicants. If, if they had enough officers, we would have
We'd have
two SROs.
We'd have two SROs today.
I don't know what their duties would look like, that was a whole nother conversation about how. Um, but the, the attorney general's second opinion that came out late last week or the week before, did, all it did was muddy it up.
Oh, it did, okay.
I've been working with the city attorney. I've, I've actually got some language that the city attorney worked on, one of our policies that he thinks would, the law enforcement would feel comfortable. So I shared that with MSBA, um, to make sure that the changes are okay to make. And then I'd bring that to you soon if it's, if it's okay.
Cause I think the issue was that the police didn't want to be in schools if they couldn't do their job effectively using certain methods.
The inter, the interesting thing is, is it's about, it's about being able to put hands on a student.
That's right.
And a patrol officer has a different set of criteria than, than an SRO does under this new language.
Yeah.
So it makes, it makes the, the civil liability for the city and the officer, it just outweighs the, their ability to come in and do that job.
And that's what they had a problem with.
Yes.
But I thought it was all settled and they were going back now in this local police officers.
I think some are, I think.
Maybe some are, yeah.
But, um, we, we had a conversation the other day, on Thursday, and like, it's probably forty-six superintendents on the call. And nobody in this area was getting SROs back.
Oh, they weren't, okay.
St. Louis County wasn't, the sheriff's department wasn't bringing SROs back. Uh, Duluth still hadn't made a decision.
So it's still out there and, Mike, okay. Thanks for clarifying that.
But if we have an emergency, we call 911 and they've been very responsive.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, they're right here quickly.
So just going off of that, so when we had an RSO and there was a situation, did they always have to, was there a log? Was there some reporting that they always had to do or not necessarily?
They, so every time Officer Casey would open a case, he would, you know, they radioed it and they get a number. So it's documented. So, so they know exactly how many times he had to respond to, to something. Um, however, just his presence in the, in the halls can deter or, or if staff or if Chad or I had a question and said, hey, this, we just want this on your radar. Maybe that isn't all documented. And that would, that's the, you can't even quantify how valuable that is, just having someone here all the time that you can voice.
Well, we did put it in our log entries, so like if our student handbook says notification to parents, um, blah, 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 and refer to police, I would all, I would follow up with the parents and let them know that according to our student handbook, we also have to let our SRO, you know, it says refer to police. So we would log it on our end as well.
And the other reason I ask is now I would assume that if 911 is called, the police come, there has to be documentation on there. And I'm just thinking, is this something where we, you know, this data would be useful? So now we really know truly what, what's happening as far as, okay, so if there is a lot of vaping, which we already, we already talk about in health and whatnot, but it can kind of give us, you know, true information of what is going on with our student body and what can we do to help or provide more value, more information.
Yep, yeah, he has all the calls from last year. And then we have all the, like Mr. Snyder said, all the documented, documented log entries that we do for suspensions or just talking with the kids. Um, and this year we're keeping a log of all the times we have to call 911 or an SRO would have been helpful.
And that, and that article in the paper over the weekend, Chief Esty refers to that document that you're, that he's using also for.
Yes, cause we're sharing it. So I have it shared with Mr. Aldridge, Mr. Snyder, and then we share it with Chief Esty. So they know exactly what's.
So everything that's going on involving a police officer is documented?
Yes.
I just think it'd be interesting to know that, okay, if it's, we've got, you know, forty percent of kids who are, or calls that are about vaping and, you know, X the number of assaults, maybe we need to talk about anger management or higher, you know, more of the health risks. You know, using this data for a positive and a change rather than just as a log, yes.
I agree. The, the other thing that's just really been awesome, and I don't, you know, I don't see it at lunch as much or maybe after school, but every morning, just about every morning, um, there's been a different police officer standing at the stairs here at the front of the building greeting kids. And I've met, it's pretty well four or five different ones. I've met quite a few of the officers. But just that, just seeing a different officer walking our halls, just that, it's been really nice. So I hope they're doing that same thing for you at lunch and after school. I don't see it as much, but I see it every day in the mornings.
I think they've been patrolling the memorial parking lot too, which is really helpful because it's, it's off our grounds, but it's our students there. And just keeping them a little safer.
And in the mornings, there's usually one posted by the anchor door. And then there's usually one parked up by the memorial building too. When I, cause I've, I've drive past the memorial building every day and I drive in, so they've been present.
I just want to thank you again, I think we've all talked about homecoming, but I just feel like, especially in this building, I feel as though the word on the street, the feeling is that the culture and the climate is changing in this building. And so I think it's, you know, so you, um, Mr. Snyder, all the faculty and staff, I think it just feels really positive. So thank you.
It really does, thank you so much.
Thank you, very good. With that, we'll move for the pay and seed committee reports. And as part of that, we'll start off with Superintendent Rick discussing updated of collaboration on current priorities.
Okay. Well, thank you, everybody. I just, um, wanted to give you a quick update on our most recent collaboration meeting with Chisholm. There we go. This is our, this is our most latest agenda from last Wednesday. And all of our board reps are there, so I don't know if there's anything in particular you'd like to mention or talk about. Um, but the conversations have been very positive. They've been focused on students, which I think is, is important. Um, we've made some big steps already in some of the, um, things that we've done and that the board has already approved with, um, the athletic director's support, the business office, obviously, the community ed programming. Um, Mr. Lewis, I, it may have came out this weekend, I didn't get a shot or, but the pie community ed pamphlet that comes out.
It came out.
It did come out. It includes Chisholm. So we also list Chisholm classes. And then it also, there's an opportunity for Chisholm classes to, or Chisholm residents to enroll in our classes and vice versa. Um, so I think we're moving in a good direction if there's anything that you'd like to add. We meet again October twenty-third, maybe that was the, I was getting the twenty-fifth and twenty-third confused. And our next meeting is October twenty-third, I believe.
It says October eleventh.
And we moved it. We moved it in the meeting, yes, yep.
When are we all going to be involved?
Yeah, we did change that date, yeah, I'm sorry. It is, I believe it's the twenty-third.
When are we all going to be involved, all the board members?
So they're, they're not going to do a full joint board meeting with twelve members, but Mr. Watson was on our, he would come back, help me Kim, if I'm saying that correctly. He's going to come back for the last update.
Right.
Where he would give a full update to the board, correct?
Right, correct.
I think that's the way we left it.
Oh. And that would be after the twenty-third.
Right, and I think the feeling was because we were approving these agreements in these areas as we were moving along, so.
We're making great progress with a bunch of enthusiasm on both sides and nothing negative, not going to. So it's great, Director McGlaughlin, what you said was as far as moving the thing and not going to the full board, remove that other reading. He needed one or two more weeks to sum it all up, so that's why we just moved it ahead in the group.
Is it going to end on a certain point?
Yep, so that, the last meeting with Mr. Watson is like, leave the twenty-third, but then he'll, he'll come do a board report or an update for both full boards. And then really the next steps after that would be to get the, the bargaining groups involved and have some conversations about what shared courses might look like.
Oh, okay.
How we coordinate that, kind of like the next step.
But the districts themselves will arrange that without Mr. Watson?
Correct. And what, what Mr. Watson is doing for us is he's putting together a joint powers agreement that we would ask both boards to approve. That basically kind of defines everything that we've did, have done so far. And then also creates, um, a mechanism going forward that if, if we're going to cooperate on some other initiatives, that it doesn't have to come back to this committee again and embedded through that whole process. It would still go through the boards and still get approval, but it would probably be more me and Mr. Morrison working on some of those details, so. But yeah, it's, it's, it's been really very positive. I, I, I said to the, at the end of our last meeting, and I truly meant it. It was just, it's been a pleasure working together. It's been fun. It's, you know, I, there's a little bit of apprehension there and a little like, you know, but it's, it's been, it's been very enjoyable and very rewarding, to be honest with you. We've done some pretty cool things so far, so.
The next meeting is October twenty-third.
Thank you.
At eleven o'clock in the morning at Valencini's.
Thank you.
Awesome. Um, Alex, I wanted to ask you how it's going with the two districts? Because I thought it was overwhelming, a little bit overwhelming the last time we were doing it.
Um, well, we, we were down an office person.
Right now?
But, um, today actually was the first day for our new person in the office, so we're fully staffed again.
Okay.
So.
And there were refer players involved on their side.
I was gonna say, do we somehow have more personnel now helping out with you managing both districts?
Yeah, I've been getting some help from ARC down in Duluth, they did help me.
ARC, okay.
Some audit items. Um, they helped us out a lot when, um, Ms. Rainey moved to the other position and helped us out with our compensation over the last two months, I guess it's been.
ARC too?
Yeah.
So you don't feel like you're overwhelmed in two districts? I mean, I don't see that much has changed with it, has it?
Well, Chisholm, they've got new administrators in there. They got a new superintendent and a new board chair. So they're worried about modus operandi.
But who's doing their financial?
Uh, it's still us. I mean, they, they hired a new, another secretary at the elementary school there and that shipped some stuff out of their superintendent's office. Their building grounds person took some work on items, so.
But do they have a, they don't have a business manager?
No.
It's you.
Yeah.
Do they have an assistant helping you? Or is, or is it just their superintendent?
For, for now, we are just trying to get back to fully staffed.
Okay. I'll ask again in a month.
We changed the title of this, of this.
It's better than what it was.
It is.
Yeah.
It is better, Alex?
Yes.
John can tell me, I don't know if I believe John.
John's coming in and helping out, yeah.
Derek, can I, I, I do believe that some, sometime here, you know, probably after audit season, I think I might come to the board with, um, some support for the business office. I, I.
Well, does Chisholm want to help pay for it?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Cause that's what I thought we were going to do, add a person and split the cost of Chisholm.
And, and, and we'll get there. Our pinch was really just getting back to being fully staffed.
Okay.
So now that this person is in here and she's going to do a great job.
Okay. Good.
Look forward.
Yeah, okay, so down the road, hopefully get more help.
Yeah, and I mean, you know, in particular, you know, just, just the audit piece, you know, running two audits, it's a, it's a six-month job, basically.
Yeah.
The audits, the audit kind of starts in the day that July one hits and it really runs all the way through that final approval right before New Year's. And it, it's overwhelming to do one.
And he's doing both districts?
Yes. But we, but we are getting the business office support and some additional help. Um, but I, I think I, at some point here in the near future, I'm going to be bringing a, a recommendation to the board for some additional support. We're just not sure what that's going to look like yet.
That makes sense, doesn't it?
But we're fully, fully staffed again and I'm just happy to.
You're happy about that?
I can attest to that.
The, the other piece that's, that, that, the big packet, the legislative update that Mrs. Secora held up to, it's for you to see, so much of that is business office related.
Yeah.
There's just so many new initiatives that.
Is there?
The unemployment insurance, the earned sick time that's coming. There's, there's just so many things that involve the business office that we're going to need some additional support.
So will you attend that meeting on the twenty-third?
I will.
Very good. Anything, anybody else on the committee?
Another question, just was in my mind, through all of that, and that's something with the business office.
Well.
Getting old.
With, and wait, he's going to speak again also, might, uh, teach you.
Yeah.
Administrative business, Alex, take it over.
Mr. Chair.
You're welcome.
EMA is in motion to approve the group handicap supplement rates as presented with Blue Cross Blue Shield effective January first, two thousand twenty-four through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four.
Support.
White Director Culture, support White Director McGlaughlin, any discussion? If there are none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carried, thank you. With that, would I have been, anything else, Rick?
I don't have anything else, Mr. Chair.
I just thought of my item.
See, I.
Yeah, it just came back and I wrote it now, so I'm through. Um, have, have the contracts been signed with the unions?
So ASME has, they've ratified theirs. Um, Hugh, I think is ratifying maybe in the next couple of weeks. We still have some stuff to work out with the Hugh contract.
Um, with like, you?
With, with the teachers, yeah.
Oh, but it's all, I thought it was all worked out.
It is, the, the, the tentative agreement is, they haven't ratified, um, yet. AS, or ASME just ratified, we can have the bill. Um, we settled with the principals, they've ratified, they need to bring. What I'd like to do is bring all the contracts together at one meeting, but that might not happen because I'm still waiting on the non-aligned group. So, um, there will be some contracts for approval on the October eighteenth meeting. I just don't know who.
The principal's signed, did you say already?
We did, we did settle with the principals, yes.
And some of these will, you have to have a little column votes, so it'll all come through the board.
Yeah.
With that, Director Culture?
Motion adjourned.
Without objection, the meeting is adjourned, hour thirty-seven. I'd like to thank everybody here. Hold on.